Meeting Thursday, July 18th, 2024. Assistant Administrator Ike, are you calling the role?
I'll do that.
Okay.
Still here. Ball.
Present.
Jensen.
Present.
Maroni.
Present.
Scott.
Here.
Anzir.
Present. Please rise for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the sky. I get a motion to approve the agenda tonight.
Also move.
Second. Right, and the discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to just seek a point of clarification on a procedural matter. As we recall at our July regular council meeting, we had discussed setting tonight's meeting and the fact that it was a city council meeting, a special council meeting, right? And it's a special council meeting because it falls on a different date than our regular council meeting. And so when I think about the agenda and what we have on at our regular council meetings, I'm noticing that our agenda tonight doesn't coincide. So as an example, no open forum. And I'm not sure who to direct the question to, I'm just wondering why do we not have open forum at this council meeting?
I guess I can speak to that, Councilmember Scott. So generally, when it comes to a special meeting, per the meeting law, a special meeting has to be, it's about what it is, what is on the agenda is what is noticed. So there are the four items that we noticed. And so in that manner, they do differ from a regular meeting in the regular agenda format in that matter.
And I will say too, within, with open forum, we have typically historically said that, you know, if it's not on our agenda, if it is on our agenda tonight, then we would ask that they would not come up to the podium. So because it's a special council meeting and we have these items specifically, I'm not sure that it would be appropriate for someone to come up to the podium and speak about something not on the agenda tonight.
Well, I guess I'm slightly more confused than I was initially. And this is a council meeting, and in our council meetings, we have open forum. I don't like to say this or feel this way, but it makes me wonder if we're just not creating additional opportunity for people to come up and address the council. And I take a little exception to the fact that we don't have open forum. Again, this is a meeting of the city council.
Any other discussion?
Are people can be allowed to say anything?
I would say no, tonight, this is about us discussing this. There's been plenty of opportunities in the last year, I would say, between the open houses, you know, previous council meetings, so I would say that, no, not tonight.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor.
No.
Point of order.
No.
Part of Robert's rules, which I was getting to.
No, a point of order cannot be called by the audience.
I can appeal.
No, a point of order cannot be called. No, a point of order cannot be called by the audience, I'm sorry.
The rule state, I guess we're not providing by that, Mr. Chancellor.
We have never adopted Robert's Rules of Order as a council. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I would just like to further make the point that I completely disagree with open forum not being on the agenda. This idea that the public and those that want to address the council had opportunity at events like open houses and the like, that's not a council meeting. It is what it is, it's an open house. And I think if we're going to stick to an agenda at a council meeting that includes open forum, that's what we ought to have on tonight's agenda.
Any discussion?
I think, I mean, I can see where Brad's coming from. That tonight, if there's decisions going to be made, if somebody does have something to say, they should be allowed to say it.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Question carries. Alright, so we'll go ahead and move on to the City Hall remodel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So tonight, we're here to present the bid from High Tech Construction on the City Hall expansion and remodel project. Before I invite Andy Picar with High Tech and then Lindsay Creams with Woodset to come up and speak, I just do want to just address some of the stuff that I put in my memo, specifically the section on the project changes. So during this process, it started again on April 1st is when you made the motion, accepted the agreement with Woodset to go into final design, construction document, and then bidding. We as staff have been working with Woodset and High Tech to finalize those designs based off of what was presented and approved back in April. During the bidding cycle, bidding period, we met to discuss budget, to make sure we were with budget with High Tech. And during the process, after the first kind of rounds of quotes came into High Tech from subcontractors, the project was around that $3.4 million range, which is a lot higher than we originally anticipated. So looking at ways to reduce the cost, we took a step back, looked at the project as a whole, to try to figure out areas that we could potentially cut back without necessarily fully reducing scope. So there are a number of items that we did change from what was originally presented and then also put out to the initial construction documents. And all this calls out really quickly, ceiling and lighting in the lobby was reduced from a vaulted ceiling. So if you see in the rendering, that was in the lobby here, we had a kind of vaulted with the exposed beam ceiling. We eliminated that, went to just a classic drop ceiling with those regular LED lighting in that. Front desk in the lobby, we originally have a stone type material for its durability, we just changed that to a plastic laminate. Expansion of the existing bathroom, so here in the hallway, in those designs, we originally expanded them to being, you know, men and women's with multiple stalls. We removed that and kept them, replaced them with a simple remodel of the existing spaces as single use bathrooms. We were fine on toilet count with the addition, with the new bathrooms that would be in the new lobby. So that was an area we cut back on. If you look at the initial designs as well, and I'll go to the new floor plan here shortly, we had a double entry in the lobby, so one that went to the west to the parking lot, and then one that went into the east for the park. So the east door was changed from a double entry to a single door entry. In the rendering, you would have saw in the lobby, there was an accent, wood accent wall behind the, in the council chambers behind the dais, we removed that and replaced it with a simple painted accent wall. Audio visual package, we reduced that significantly to make the fullest use of our existing equipment. We had a snow melt system, which was something that we discussed, I think back in March, April, located at the entrance to the lobby, again, to just try to help keep ice and stuff out, we removed that. There were some decorative trusses on the exterior near the entrance were removed. Also, the exterior stone face in the, on the front of the building, the west side of the building that had City Point on there, we removed that. That also had some illuminated letters, we removed the illuminated letters as well. We were going to give the City Hall sign a full facelift, that's what I'm calling it, so we were going to replace the siding on it. We were going to update the digital reader board. We removed those pieces and just simple, and replaced it with a simple paint job, to update the paint job and then match it with the siding. So the siding wouldn't change, but the paint would match that of the building. There's some curb and gutter work around the parking lot entrances that was identified as not necessary, so we removed that. And then why the connections, the design of the electrical system was maintained with the intent of a backup generator, the generator itself was removed, and that's something we could capitalize down the road if we wanted to. So as we looked into all the different areas we cut in, these are the areas that we felt like were the only, I will call it fat, we kind of really had left in this project. It felt like anything further would be, to reduce costs would be, you'd have to reduce the scope. So that's what, some of the things that we took into account right off the bat before, and it's taken into account in the bid that High Tech has before you today. So I guess before, are there any questions on those items specifically before I have Andy and Lindsay come up?
Do you have the dollar amounts that those were, from a savings perspective?
So, you know, we were at 3.4 and the total bid that Andy's going to present is not to exceed 2.95, so about a half a million dollars.
Okay, like something like the, where is it? The snow melt system, right? So what is the benefit, like, as far as the cost, like, what is the benefit to the staff to have that as far as like shoveling snow and doing that? What, what are we losing?
We don't have to, well, we, intention of the snow melt system was reduce time having to shovel the sidewalk. So we shovel the sidewalk now, we can continue to shovel the sidewalk.
Yeah, I just, I guess I'm, I think the hardest part about some of this stuff, you know, even with the replacing to laminate is obviously the lifespan of things like stone versus laminate, right? So in 10 years, if that laminate chips, are we going to have to replace it, right? So I think I, I'm not a huge fan of kind of nitpicking through some of these things, but it would be nice to understand what the dollar amounts that we're assigned to some of these are.
Andy can speak to all of those, again, the, all of these items where he had quotes for from subcontractors, so he can speak to all of that as well.
Okay.
Can you clarify, on the audio visual package line, it says was reduced to use the existing system to the fullest extent possible? What's the idea with the fullest extent possible?
Yeah, so our initial design goal was to, you know, do things such as have some fixed microphones instead of headsets. So in such, so suddenly those were removed. You know, the speakers, pretty much, you know, instead of getting new speakers, use the existing speakers, you know, assuming that we can move the, which we're pretty confident we can move the speakers, move the speakers. We already were planning on reusing our cameras. So in the community room part of it, when you would put it in community room mode, we did have a ceiling mounted projector and projector screen. We removed those, that's not something we have today, so we removed that. Daniel, is there anything other specific that you, you're my, I do, anything specific you think I'm missing? I think the idea was not to try to have to expand the system we have now.
Yeah, so in the initial design, the thought was that we would want to revamp some of the systems we're using in here so that we're getting better audio quality. Right now, we have a lot of packet loss reduction because we're using wireless. And the recording system is kind of outdated and old and just, it's kind of what, but it does work. When it came back, how, with the price that it was at, we weren't as comfortable with it. So we figured, hey, we might be able to reutilize some of the stuff we have right now. And that was where we ended up on there. Like David said, we went from essentially trying to keep a couple things, like the cameras are in good condition. There's no reason to replace any of those. Also, those are pretty expensive cameras and they're not at end of life yet, so we can keep those. But we figured, well, we can take what we have now and sort of program around it and then keep the bulk of it. That was the thought process behind it, but my, like I said, my current plan in our current strategy is like, we're basically keeping the entire system that we have in this room right now. I have no intention of replacing basically any of this. We will have to replace it sooner as a result of that, just because there will come some things that will break, but we can cross that bridge when we come to it.
Yeah, appreciate the clarification, and I think what you said at the end would be overall my concern. We're going to go through the paces of remodel and spending the money that that takes. It just seems to me like it would be a really good investment to not continue using an old outdated system as, as being acknowledged. So the last, the last item there regarding the generator? Do we currently have a generator?
No, not for City Hall.
We don't.
Yep, so that was during the discussion, that's kind of throughout the design, whether it was the new, when we first started with new building and then remodel, there's a discussion of backing up the building, and I think we went back and forth. At one point, we actually recommended not backing it up, and then I think it was in the January or February meeting, you as a councilor of discussion decided, actually, no, we should back it up for the main purpose of, should say we have a storm and City Hall is spared, you know, you look at what's just happened down in Houston, Texas, granted, we're not going to get a hurricane, but say we get, say the tornadoes we had a month ago were a lot worse. You know, we could have City Hall backed up and maybe have it as a cooling center or some kind of recovery center, not necessarily as a shelter, but somewhere in recovery center if we had that generator in there. So that's why we designed this project to have a generator. But we, the generator itself, I can remember exactly the bid you had, Andy, but it was north of $100,000. So that was an area where we said, we don't have one today, so it's not something we'd be losing. And it's something down the road we could capitalize and acquire at a later date. The connections would already be there, so it would just be to get, I think it was planned, the idea would be like a fixed natural gas generator. If we couldn't get that at a later date, the connections would already be there, though.
Yeah, again, I guess I would just speak to a level of concern about cutting an item like that out. It feels, to me, anyway, pretty, pretty essential that we have backup power at City Hall. When I think about how we serve our customers, residents, and just the public at large, to not have a generator that can continue powering city functions, just doesn't feel like a good place to be.
And I do agree with Councilman Scott on that. Does anyone else have any questions on it?
Okay, then I'll have Mr. Picar, and I'll let you speak to your bid. Good afternoon. Again, Andy Picar with High Tech Construction. I appreciate the opportunity to put together a number for this project for you guys. I'll let you guys fire away. We're at that 2.95 million. It's higher than I want it to be, but, you know, after we pull it all together with numerous subcontractors and materials, that's where we're at. So I can speak on a few of those items that you guys had some questions on. So the generator, I guess, was one. So that is a, what we have in there currently with that number, again, does not include the physical generator, but it does allow for a plug and play situation. So if you had a rental generator or something like that, you could plug it in and feed the building, so. The, let's see, was there, I don't remember, was there other, the quartz and laminate, some of those finishes, right? Those are definitely considerations, right, the longevity with that, I mean, it comes at a cost, right, like all things, so.
So with the, the cost overrun from the 2.5 to initially 3.4, where was the major part of the cost? Was it the remodel, was it the new build?
The remodel, yeah. So, and I know, you know, going back through this, right, we gave a firm number on the new build back in December, whatever it was. And then when we decided, or started looking at the renovation piece, we were giving square foot numbers. I mean, that's a, a pretty big guess, right? What does renovation mean? It means something different to me than it probably does to you guys, and that's probably where the biggest outlier is. You know, and with this, you know, the AV system is big numbers, furniture package, you know, some of those that, when I put a square foot number together, doesn't necessarily include some of that. So we had to put a $100,000 well in to feed the fire suppression system. So there's some big, big ones that kind of jump in there. But yeah, it, again, materials are still going up a little bit, so that is driving some of that number as well. You know, bidding summer versus last winter, so.
Do you know a number, because I know this bid is both, you know, existing City Hall and new, what the approximate cost of the new addition is?
Yeah, I didn't break that out.
Okay.
When we got our subcontractor numbers, it was just a lump sum.
Combined, which is what you were supposed to, I'm just curious.
Well, and we knew the price increase was going to be a part of it when we were discussing this. I mean, that was the risk that we took in voting for the remodel, because remodels always come in higher than, and this was, we discussed this, so this is where we're at, and this is, well, we did discuss this, and this was the risk.
Andy, I got a few questions. It probably would start with the very bottom of the information that you provided. It outlines a number of exclusions, so the things that are not, I'm guessing, included in the overall price. Can you just clarify each one of those?
Yeah, definitely. So, yeah, going through our prevailing wages, so assuming funding source isn't state dollars or any of that, doesn't require prevailing wage, so. The rates we pay, you know, typically pay the guys, isn't a huge difference from prevailing wage rates, but it would be an increase to go to prevailing wage rates, so.
Does a bond require prevailing wages?
Does not. The funding sources we would be using do not require prevailing wages.
Okay.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Sorry. Asbestos abatement, with the existing building, right, that applies. I don't foresee that being an issue, but if there is a, some material found, we'd have to pay a contractor to come in and professionally abate that, so.
So then how do you see something like that potentially working with the cost that you've come up with? I mean, would, would the city be looking at a cost increase then to address that abatement?
Yes, if there was any found. With this year of build, again, I do not see that as an issue, but, you know.
You never know.
I've been surprised before.
Yeah, and we discussed this in length, at length, so.
Yeah, just the last, the next item, unforeseen conditions within wall spaces, if something is rotten that we don't know about, that we weren't planning on swapping out within the plans, those types of scenarios. Again, we did a little bit of investigation, I don't foresee that as an issue either. But if there was a wall that was failing from rot or was framed incorrectly on the initial build, some of those types of things is all that one's covering.
So that would primarily cover anything that's like in a wall that we can't sit here and see.
Correct.
That's sheet rocked or whatever.
Yep. Any of this, the furniture or storage or removal would assume be by owner. Generator, again, just noting that that generator was removed. The boiler and hydronic system, again, just noting that that snow melt system and the boiler system as a whole would be, was removed from the project.
So the boiler is in conjunction with the snow melt system, then?
Correct, because that was the only system it served, yep.
Okay.
If I could just echo onto that, out of those exclusions, besides the generator and the boiler or hydronic, how often do you put those exclusions on most bids? Like, those are boilerplate exclusions, or?
Pretty much.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, there's no, there's nothing special, we're trying to hide or anything there, that's a, that's a pretty standard. You know, just identifying the wage rates so that they're all fronts, we're talking about it and it doesn't get overlooked. And then, like, say asbestos and unforeseen conditions kind of all fall into that category, so. And a lot of times, we, you know, exclusions or clarifications, I guess, is another term that we use with that as well. So kind of the same thing.
Under Division 02 Existing Conditions Demo and Site Work, the first line item there, can you help clarify what selective demolition?
Yeah, so what we term selective demo is not like a structural demolition of a building. It would be pulling drywall off the walls, removing casework or furniture, cabinets or some of that. That is, you know, doors, some of that, that is what we term selective demo.
Okay. And I guess the last question I have is in Division 12 Furnishings. Just interested in, how was the $130,000 furniture allowance determined upon?
Lindsay might want, Andy, Lindsay might be the best one on that one. She's the furniture guru.
The furniture allowance under Division 12 was generated based on user group meetings that we had with staff in the building to talk about the requirements for their office furniture, open office furniture, and then also spaces such as the community room, council chambers, multipurpose room and library. We decided to work with KI Furniture, which is a Sourcewell-approved vendor. So that is furniture you can buy direct from Sourcewell without going out for competitive bids. Yeah, I don't know what else to add to that.
Do you have, I know, like, through KI Furniture then, what is a typical cost for just a single workstation for an employee?
Yes, I don't have that in front of me, but we do, yeah, we've got a line item budget for the furniture.
And of course, I'm just wanting clarification in asking these questions, it feels like $130,000 to me is, is pretty light. When I think about my experience with office furniture and the costs, the number of staff we have, how we're going to have to outfit spaces with tables and chairs, and, I mean, those items add up quick.
They do, yeah, so we worked together on the specifications of the furniture items. So we're not looking at a residential quality furniture, this is a very competitive, commercial grade of furniture. So the longevity of this furniture is something that will last a very long time. The Sourcewell budget, or the Sourcewell pricing also reduces list price. Given the amount of furniture that we're purchasing, we actually get to tap into Sourcewell's deepest tier of discounting, which is 50% off of list. We also reviewed other discount options, not looking at Sourcewell pricing, but other options that are out there, the University of Minnesota, the State of Minnesota pricing, those all do not get to that deepest tier of discounts. Or Sourcewell, in this case, was the deepest tier discount. So we're getting about 50% off list because of the quality, or I'm sorry, the quantity of furniture that's being purchased for this order.
And that's the benefit of working through Sourcewell, is that they have those contract partners to reduce cost.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
On a follow-up on that furnishings, does that still include the cube spaces then?
It does.
For that, okay.
Yep, and so we built future flexibility in mind with the cubicle layout. So instead of building the power and data through the floor in specific locations, we're dropping power poles from the ceiling, so it's very flexible into the future. We also have planned for the space in the open office to accommodate future growth in cubicles and also reconfiguring the cubicles that are there. So today, they might be in one configuration, but in the future, we might need to get more staff in that open office area. So the furniture that was selected for this quote, for example, is very reconfigurable into the future. Even the furniture for this space as well, things are utilized in this room that have like a flip and tuck away option, so we don't have lifting of heavy tables, having additional excess of storage room, for example. So tables and chairs can kind of recirculate in the community room or council chambers, just based on the use.
Anybody else? Good, thank you.
A question for Andy, if I may. It appears that the design kind of changed slightly a little bit on the south side of the building, where the library was going to be on the west. Looks like that flipped flopped because the, and I'm just assuming this is why I want to build into that, the multipurpose room is now in the west, is that due to the non-expanding of the bathrooms and using that space as the storage space, or?
I can actually take that one, Andy, that was kind of, the decision about that is as we were getting into more of the, finalizing the documents, kind of twofold, it actually had nothing to do with the bathroom, so actually that switch happened before that. The reasoning was, is that's the west side space, so down here, the space is actually about 50 square feet bigger than the east side. And so we thought the multipurpose room should be bigger than the library, first of all. Also, this is, obviously, this corner gets sun pretty much all day long. And we thought from a library perspective with books and stuff, you wouldn't necessarily want that, that exposure in the library. So that's why one reason, so the biggest two reasons were, first of all, this space is slightly smaller, so we wanted more space in a multipurpose room than the library. And then also, just because of that, that sun exposure, we felt the library would be more appropriate on the east side. That's why we just flipped those two.
And are we still considering the southern portion? I know one of the topics that the Parks Committee wanted was like, you're I know one of the topics that the Parks Committee wanted was like year-round restrooms, indoor restrooms. Is this south portion still going to be open per se, or is it that middle?
Yeah, so we discussed that quite a bit, especially when it came to access control. We had actually, I think, we discussed access control multiple times. And then what it came down to is the best area for, you know, part of the desire was to have essentially 24/7 possible access for people using the park, especially bathrooms. So it came down to the best, most efficient way is this south piece. So these doors here going into the community room, those would be access controlled. So outside of hours, they would be locked. This door up here is purely in egress. So there would actually be no handle on the outside, so there'd be a crash bar, you could get out, but you couldn't get in. So pretty much it would just be this door. These doors could stay open. They're programmable, so if we ended up having an issue where people weren't respecting the building, we could lock it down. But right now would be, people could come in, use the bathrooms. I believe, do we put, we put access control in the library and the multipurpose room? Yeah, so these two could be also, these two would also be locked. So, you know, outside of hours, people could come in, get in here, use the bathrooms. So they would have, especially in the winter, when the current bathrooms aren't available, they could come in, use the bathrooms, you know, or, you know, changing, use it as a kind of a family style bathroom if they wanted to do that. Again, these would be access controlled, so they don't have to lock at four o'clock when we're not here. If you wanted to leave them open to seven, that would be kind of a council decision of how long do you want to leave them open? You know, let's actually, thought process there was the library for, if we're not here on weekends. Again, we could always see how it goes. All the rooms would have cameras in them. So if there is an issue, someone's going to get caught on camera doing it. So, but there's access control so that if there was an issue, you could always just lock it down. Or if you wanted to lock it down and then decide, you know, let's try opening it up, you could do that as well.
Thank you.
From, I will add, I just wanted to, on that one clarification. So this door would be locked, if someone rented the community room, depending on the type of security system, either you can program it, give them a temporary FOB, whatever, to get in. So we'd unlock this door. What would happen is, so this door is not access controlled. The reason being is per the building code, there would have to be an egress. We can't just have this one. So this door would not be access controlled. So if someone is using the community room, they would be able to get into the lobby, but they would, wouldn't be able to get past that. So staff space is locked, community, the conference room would be locked. They would be able to use the bathrooms, obviously wouldn't lock those down. Like IT room, that would be locked. So if someone's using the community room, in theory, they would have access to this lobby. We would probably keep these doors locked, so if they went out these doors, they'd have to go all the way back around or someone would have to let them in. But that was just an area that we couldn't avoid that per building code requirements. But if someone is not using the space, this door will be locked and they will not be able to access this space and therefore not this space, if that makes any sense.
Any other questions?
I don't at this time, no.
And we're good?
Thank you.
All right, so I guess we can kind of talk about what is everyone's thoughts on moving forward with this and from what we heard tonight and the proposal.
Are we not going to get into more discussion on the funding aspects?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can go into that if you like.
Yeah, we can move into that.
Yeah, so in my memo, again, just updated funding numbers for you. As you see in there, estimated end of year balance in the capital fund is $5.1 million. As of 6:30, about $299 is in there right now. There's that three, a little over 300 fund balance in the debt service fund. And as we have no debt, that is available for any use that the council chooses. We anticipate a little over $1.26 million in revenue by the end of the year. The fire truck is also something we discussed in the June meeting. We'll need to bond and get reimbursed for that, so that cost came out of the capital fund. So if you put that back in there. And then, so you have essentially these two forms of revenue that will come in. We estimate there's currently about $850,000 in planned expenditures that we have yet, that were planned as part of the budget process that we've yet to realize. So that's how we get to an estimated end of year balance of about $5.12 million. On the bonding side, again, we've talked about the 572, which is made up of that 230,000 old debt payment that we've been, that's been kept in as a transfer to the capital fund. A $342,000 that's, that's been in, going in there to help fund the capital fund the last number of years. Between those two, as presented in June by Baker Tilly, you can get about $5.8 million in bonding capacity just from those two sources of revenue. So that's some of the funding. When it comes to payment, there's essentially two avenues you can go down. The first is to bond the project. What I presented here would be a bond in its entirety. So if you bonded 2.95 million, take that out of the 5.8 million essentially capacity that we have already built into the levy, you would be able to pay for the project, still have about 2.86 million in capacity left over, still have about $5.12 million in your capital fund at the end of the year. The other option would be a cash payment. So if you paid the 2.95, directly out of our capital funds, you would end at 2.17. Now again, I'm assuming, you know, where you pay for, you wouldn't pay for the whole city hall upfront, obviously, but I'm just trying to get an example here. So you would end that with 2.17 million still in the capital fund, and then you still have your 572 for any future use that you choose to use it for. Obviously, there's always the hybrid option, pay some, bond some, if you wanted to go that route as well.
Can you give us, because we were, we were kind of discussing this, what is the benefit of paying cash? Because originally that was what we had discussed.
Mm-hmm, so difference paying cash, bonding, obviously if you, I'll just go, I'll just go, because that's the order of having in. Bonding, you're using today dollars, paying in tomorrow dollars. It's kind of the idea, you maintain more cash liquidity that you can use for different projects now or in the near future. Defect, you pay roughly, based off of what Baker Tilly presented, I think it's something like $900,000 over 15 years in interest. So you, obviously you're going to end up, a $2.95 million project is really going to cost you almost four, you know, three and a quarter, three, you know, 3.75 over 15 years. If you pay cash, obviously it's 2.95. Done. But then you have less cash in the short term to do other projects.
Have you looked at the benefits of doing a hybrid and what would be a benefit of doing, like a higher cash, lower bond, like would that even be a benefit?
I think it depends on what you're trying to do. You know, if we were talking about, for example, later on the agenda, I'll be presenting the draft of the, of the capital improvement plan. If you're trying to have extra money on hand to seed like a capital improvement plan, or you've got, you know, if you're, if you're concerned about, hey, we've got a, you know, we've got some, in the next couple of years, some equipment pieces that we don't want to bond for, we want to pay cash for. So we don't want to have our cash balance go lower. That'd be a situation where you could consider doing some bonding, some cash. That's kind of, you know, then you pay less in interest. Most of the time when I see, in my personal experience, when I've seen cities do that hybrid, it's because they're going, we want to maintain a certain level of cash liquidity. And we want, we want to have a certain amount of cash on hand at any given time. So, you know, from my, my thought is, you know, even as we get into discussion about the equipment capital plan, you know, 2.1 million, I think in the past I said, you know, 2.5, you know, at the end of the day, 2.17. It's right still in that ballpark. You know, from my perspective, that doesn't, you know, I'd be comfortable, you know, if we were talking, if you were going to be doing this project and getting down to a quarter million, you know, 250,000 balance, I'd be sweating a little bit because that's, you know, that's kind of low. But 2 million with that 57, with also that 572 left over, I think we'd still be in a very good financial position. So sometimes when it comes to bonding, you know, pay, you know, should we bond this project, pay cash for this project, pay cash for this project or bond it? You get a little bit of a robbing Peter to pay Paul. So it's really the kind of, it comes down to what is the council most comfortable with. Obviously with bonding, you do have, as Baker Tilly presented, obviously there's a process to bonding. These would be CIP bonds. So obviously you have to go through a process. It takes time to get it. Opportunities for, you know, reverse referendum, things like that. So that's where, you know, other aspects to the bonding piece versus cash, obviously there's, there's no, it's the council's decision.
But if we look at any of the capital that we're looking to purchase in the next 10 to 15 years, $900,000 could, of what we would save in a bonding, paying interest, we could purchase that capital, whatever it is that we're looking to purchase. So I mean, I think that's something that we have to consider. Is that 900,000 is a lot of money to be throwing away at interest when we have the cash to do it today?
But as David also mentioned, you run the risk of not having the liquidity that the city may want to have, not knowing what could come up, what type of emergency we could be faced with. I, I think the idea of moving forward in utilizing a majority of cash is very pound wise and foolish otherwise. I, I would not in any way favor that. David, can you clarify in that first kind of table in our project funding, the anticipated capital revenue?
Yeah, so in the, we went through the, did I have that? I did not. She gave me, I don't think I'm going to be able to access the drive at the moment. Essentially the anticipated capital revenue, so yeah, so when we do the budget, there are certain things that we can anticipate. So of that anticipated capital revenue, so like 1.268 million, obviously there's that, there's those transfers. So like essentially that, the 572 that was part of that revenue, we do that at the end of the year. So there's that, is made up of there. We look at some, what else do I have in there? That's also made up of revenue we get from like assessments that get paid. We get, when we get our tax settlement, so there's a certain amount of assessments that end up going into those, get put into the capital fund when they get paid. So we get that when we get our tax settlement, which we just got. But as, it hasn't been recognized in here, so we just got it at the beginning of July. So that's where a lot of that revenue comes from, is that 572 from, you know, assessments and other. Let me see if I can actually, let's see if I have access, because I'm not directly connected. Do I have access to the drive? If I do, I can actually pull it up and, oh, I do. It'll be easier if I can just get in here. Let me pull up the budget. And then I'll just, I can just detail it, it's easier that way. Okay, so if we go to the capital fund, I'm going to have to scroll. 401, 401, 401. There we go. Oops. Oh, come on, we're just there. Capital fund, yep. So this is the approved 2024 budget, so when we looked at revenue, this is where they, so franchise fees, we estimated $5,000, $2,000, spent $50,000 in special assessments, actually probably about almost $80,000 assessments. There, you know, property sales, copies, and then the transfers in. So this is where we, there's that 340, there's $10,000 that comes in. We do out of parks every year, $50,000 from Public Works. So it's actually the 572 plus another 70,000, so there's six something there. So that's where the revenue, so we anticipated 790 and then. There's more, there's 500, another additional thousand in there. I can't remember where that is exactly, but yeah, so that's where we're at.
So if I'm understanding those sources of revenue, right, it sounds like there's a reasonably high level of unpredictability in terms of what we're going to take in to go into the capital fund?
A little, a little bit. The numbers I put in revenue have always been, I go on the conservative end of it. I know last year, I think we were, we ended up bringing in, I wanted to say it was almost 300,000 more than what we budgeted for. Because the other thing that we don't budget in there is interest. So that we get from our investments. So that's something we don't budget, I don't budget that just because it is, that is completely uncertain. Right now, I think on interest, we are, last I looked, I think we were well over $50,000 in interest already this year.
And I think the overall thing that I see when I look at that information is, you know, it is basically at this point an estimate, right? So if we're estimating 5.1 as a balance, it's certainly not saying that we're going to have that much money in the capital fund as a balance. It could end up being 300,000, half a million less.
Right.
Right?
It's an estimate.
And then the anticipated truck reimbursement, is that for the new ladder truck?
Yes. So when we funded that payment, that we took that out of the capital fund. So that's just the reimbursing of that money.
Which, couldn't that be well into next year? I mean, until we bond, we're not going to see the reimbursement for that.
Well, based off of whatever decision is made tonight, where actually my plan was actually on August 5th, have that process start, so we'd actually have that.
Okay.
That, because that's an equipment bond, it's a much simpler bonding process and we would, if we started that process on August 5th, we would probably have the money by the beginning of November.
And then could you also touch on, we've had, you and I have had numerous conversations on the street CIP. My concern is there's going to be no money for streets. So depending on how we finance all this, there may not be anything to put in the streets CIP to start funding it right away, correct?
Correct, so obviously we don't have enough money to do everything. You know, if we, and I might just jump ahead a little bit here. If the city hall, I'm going to do a, this is about the equipment CIP, so we'll get to discussing that a little bit, a little later, so I don't want to jump too far ahead. But essentially, in a scenario in which city hall is paid for in cash, should you choose to do that? I said, I asked maybe about 2 million left over. If you used 1 million of that to seed an equipment capital plan, using existing dollars, I estimate, I don't want to get too far into this quite yet, because we'll explain all these numbers to you. But you could essentially, you would just have, you'd pay for city hall, you'd fund your equipment capital plan as it currently sits. You'd have, still have roughly a million dollars left over and you'd have about that, about 400 of that 572 left over. That would probably then cover, that 400 would probably come, more than comfortably cover a bond to cover the costs of Bushman Road. So then you're doing city hall, Bushman Road, and equipment capital plan. You could do any combination of that, you know, I think, and then, you know, maybe if you drop city hall, maybe you have money for Bushman Road, street CIP, some kind of money for a street CIP and then money for a capital CIP, vice versa, you could do all, some kind of juggling. Fortunately, we don't know today how much money we would need to cover a street CIP. Obviously, that's part of that process of figuring out what does that dollar figure look like? Once Wood Seth has completed that, we'll have that roughly by the end of the year. Also, part of that discussion is going to get to, once that's done, the next phase of discussion is the funding of that. And is that moving, trying to get rid of assessments, go 100% levy, assessments, you know, changing the assessments, so it's a, it's a kind of a complicated discussion. We would have some money, maybe not a lot. So I think it all depends on what combination of projects you do, I guess.
I think that, you know, the city hall and Bushman, everything is just going to get more expensive. So we need to find a way to get both of those done, in my opinion, so we can move on to the next project. So I think it's more just discussing maybe the. So I think it's more just discussing maybe the percentage of cash and bonding that we need to really look at.
I guess I'm not comfortable with the price as it came in.
It's only going to get higher, though.
Well, that could be, but I'm still not comfortable with it.
Well, and I would agree with Steve and I think maybe even the mayor. It's only going to get more expensive. My fear is that the cost of new city hall and remodel was reduced likely more than what it should have been. And I feel like we're knowingly entering a project that invariably is going to end up costing more. There's, there's no way that we can know where there might be mold issues. We haven't even talked about and figured out what's happening with removal and storage of existing furniture and equipment. That's going to be a cost. So while we talk about a 2.9 million dollar price tag, I see it every bit increasing, whether it's directly at the time that the project's happening or whether it's with additional needs, like a generator, that we knowingly are going to want to have, are going to need to have at some point.
I think the issue is that we already discussed this for a while, months, and we understood that building new, we were not going to have the risk of these price increases. And yet still, we are here today with this decision. So I think that we had a lot of opportunity to make that decision, to understand that this is what we were getting into when we decided to vote for renovation. And this is where we're sitting today. But I think that because you've already walked through that door, we need to get the project done for staff and we need to move on to the next project. So it is, like I said, unfortunate that it is higher, but we knew the risk and this is where it sits today. And we've spent a lot of time on this. So I do think that we need to move forward with it, just figuring out what percentage of cash or bonding we're going to do.
And once again, I couldn't disagree with you more. You know, there's a reference to multiple times, we've spent so much time on this. I mean, so much effort over years have been poured into this. If we were to have done half the due diligence with city hall, with a remodel, with true needs for this community, the ones being poured into purchasing the Landis gear building, I would feel a hell of a lot more comfortable moving forward with a decision. This every bit feels to me like we've got council members with personal goals and aspirations around accomplishing projects and you're willing to do it at any and all costs to the taxpayer. And I will not have any part of it. I think I've made my points and my concerns very clear up to this time.
I think, you know, I look back at the past and, you know, the council moved forward with doing a package for the new, new city hall. We were pretty moving, pretty, pretty set on going forward with that. We had an open house, we had public input about that, that dollar figure is becoming too much. So we came back to the drawing board and said, okay, let's, let's look at that remodel in addition. At that point, we were estimating that 2.5. I, I too agree, came in higher than what was the goal. Came in much higher and then we had to peel back some items. It kind of goes back to, if it was to be bonded, you know, the 230,000 bond payment would cover roughly 2.35. What it kind of tells me is that if we, if we want to move forward with, with new city hall, because unless things have changed, we all agreed that staff space needs to be addressed. We are short on staff space. That is a need for the city. Not a new community center, we're taking that whole thing out. We need new staff space. I believe we're still on the same page. But what, what I'm hearing though is that if we continued with a levy dollar amount of 230,000 that we kind of earmarked for city hall at that 2.35 million, we've already seen that that is not enough levy dollars to pay for said billing, building. And so if we don't pull the trigger today, which is an option, and we continue down the path of, it would have to increase the levy to accommodate said, said building with the amenities that we're talking about not having today. You know, it goes back to, you know, there's talk about reducing the levy. That's not a possible way if we still acknowledge that the city hall needs to be addressed. I'm wondering if that's a consensus still with us. And if it is, what that means is if we don't go forward today, we're going to increase the levy to accommodate for said building in the future, plus some due to cost increases we see in the future if we don't do anything today. Am I correct?
The money in bonding capacity today.
We, we have 2.3 and 3.4.
5.8.
Sorry, 5.8 total.
I have a clarification, it's not, it's not this and that.
True, 5.8.
It's 5.8, I would say, I would say, look at it at 5.8 because it's not, you could do. I just, I just call the reason with 2.3 and 4.2.
So there's enough.
So there's, there's enough, but the concern is Bushman is still that impending, impending project that we've also agreed upon that needs to be addressed as well. Now, yes, we do have cash on hand or with anticipated funds to be able to pay for said building, but not for building and Bushman. So bonding will be required regardless.
Correct.
In any capacity.
I mean, my concern still is there won't be anything for the street CIP. Granted, that's, that comes at the end of the year, but the city has been putting X amount for many years towards streets. And granted, Bushman falls under that. But it, we need, you know, we know there's streets right now that need to be, they need work. So that's going to negate the ability to, you know, have any money for street CIP. You know, you have his capital plan. There's not enough for everything. There's no two ways about it.
Well, we originally said too, that 2.5 we could pay cash. We could bond for the additional increase that we're seeing here today and still pay the 2.5 like we originally discussed and just bond for that increase. But I, I, I think any city is going to struggle with the fact that there's always going to be more to do than you have cash or bonding at the time of a decision. But the problem is, is like, we have to make decisions to move forward. We can't just continue to put these things off. And I think that that is what has happened. And so I think that we need to find a way to get Bushman and city hall done in the best possible way, the most fiscally, you know, the best way possible fiscally, so.
I mean, I, I, I think that it's going to get more expensive. So I agree, we should move forward with these two projects. I did not vote to approve the remodel and the expansion. I wanted to go a different direction, but the city council, majority of the city council voted to move forward with the remodel and expansion. That's what we're talking about today. And if we're going that direction, which was voted on and approved, then I think we should move forward with it. Although I do agree with some of the discussions about not cutting some of the design changes that were in the end. And I don't know what that looks like as far as like the ability to add some of those things back in, like the generator that's been discussed, the AV equipment. And for example, the quartz versus the laminate. So those are, but I would be in favor of bonding for this. I don't think we need to, or we could do the, you know, 2.5 bonding and then the, the remainder in cash.
And just to clarify, I, I think council member Ball and I were in the same situation. I too did not vote in favor at the time of moving this project forward and in large part because I honestly don't believe that there's been enough time, enough community engagement, enough information gathering to truly understand in looking at the existing city hall, what are the possibilities? How can it be retooled in a way to accommodate staff, to get to certain community needs? And I was favoring more of the likelihood that we need additional space amounting into a reasonably modest addition to this building, not an extensive new city hall. That was my issue.
And I was always in favor of a new build. I knew this was going to happen. I've said it multiple times that remodel, this, you see an increase and this is what happened, but because it was basically a stalemate up here. And if one of us didn't move on our vote, then staff would suffer and nothing would be done. And in my opinion, I think it's better to do something than do nothing. So I did vote in favor of this, not because I thought it was the best option, but because I wanted to take care of the staff. So this is where we're at today and this is where we need to move forward now.
So are you suggesting that the project cost increase was related to the remodel?
I think that when you have more of a hard bid on new construction, you're going to have less changes overall to that price. And I believe you did allude to that and he is nodding his head.
But the new build was still 4.3 million.
I know, and I understand that. I mean, I, 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 yeah, no, and I understand it was more. But I mean, when you look at 4 million versus 3 million and you have a $3 million remodel and a $4 million new build and you look at it 20, 30, 40, 50 years from now, are, what council is going to look back and say, man, they could have spent an extra million dollars and gotten a brand new building? And that was always the way that I looked at it, was the long-term investment into it, not just the short term. How do we pick the projects that are, you know, do things the least amount of cost? Because I think quality makes a huge difference in the long-term, you know, health of a community. And again, being fiscally responsible doesn't mean that you don't spend any money. But again, here we are today, this is what we chose. Not everybody wanted this, I understand that. But I do think that at this point, we just need to decide what is the best way to finance it that makes the most sense. I'm in favor of doing, you know, what makes the most sense for the city long-term. Understanding that streets, they're going to cost money. But I think when you look at our health right now and the way that we have the cash and the bonding capacity, there's a lot of cities that start street plans that go 30 years that don't have as much cash on hand as we have. So we are sitting in a much better position than a lot of cities are. So I do consider us very lucky in that regard. But I think no matter what, there's never going to be enough money to do everything that we need.
I would agree, we're financially healthy, but I, I disagree. There needs to be money put in for streets IP. The city's been putting it in for years, saying it's for infrastructure, it's for streets.
Tonight, do we have to make a determine that we're for sure bonding or not bonding or paying cash? Like if we said, we feel comfortable, we can pay cash, but we want that option to bond at a later time, should we start looking at the CIP plans? And we go, geez, the 2.9 that we just spent for city hall, we would like to have that back in cash to accommodate some seed money for the projects. Is that a possibility like we did with the fire truck?
Yeah, so if you wanted to have more discussion on, you know, do you bond the whole thing? Do you bond part? What you would do, what we would do is at your meeting in August, on August 5th, I think what you need to do first would be, are you accepting the bid from High Tech? That's obviously kind of question one. We need a formal action on that to really get the process rolling. August 5th, we would do what we did with the fire truck, which would be a reimbursement resolution. Obviously, you know, what we talked about here, we have the cash on hand that we can be paying for the project as we go. Again, it's not a 2.95 million dollar bill on day one. It's a as we go type process. And then how reimbursement resolution, we would do the resolution for the full amount. And then you have about 18 months is what you have within eight, from the time that the resolution is adopted to, you have 18 months to execute, to issue a bond. If you do the amount, if you do revert the reimbursement resolution for the full amount and choose to do less, that's fine. You can't do less and then do more. So if you did, you know, had the reimbursement resolution be for the 2.95 million and down the road you decided, no, we're only going to be two and a half or two, that should be fine. You can't do, well, we'll do reimbursement resolution for two and then go, hmm, actually, let's just do the full thing. So that's how we would do that. But yes, you would have the ability to have more time to discuss what exactly amount do you want? And then actually go through the bond, the bonding process while get the, while getting the project moving.
So if we accept it tonight, then what would that look like for you guys? As far as when, would you start?
I guess one thing to note, so this is a not to exceed number because we are actually still, have a few value engineering items or savings that we're still chasing, that we haven't got equipment prices back or some of that. So note, this is a not to exceed number because we feel comfortable bringing this down yet. So with the Gordian source, source well process, there's still some data entry to do to generate exactly where the, the dollars exactly fall. So it's still a little bit of moving target with that matter. So we would finalize that, that would generate a work order with the final, true final build amount. And then, yeah, then I guess construction wise, just phasing talk, this building would be left alone. We would take on the north side of the building, build the addition. Operations would still proceed in here without being impacted too much. And then, you know, finish that or get that started yet this fall and then work through winter to have that addition finalized and then potentially move everybody over and then take on the renovation. It's kind of phase one, phase two, if you will.
And if approved tonight, when do you think you'd break ground?
It would be this fall, so it'd be probably September timeframe. We would start breaking ground on the addition.
Well, and I'm even more concerned than I was before, you know, and correct me if I'm wrong, but what I heard you say is you're still chasing savings. The 2.9 is not to exceed. Why wouldn't we as a council wait until they understand what the additional savings are? We may be looking at a project that's 2.7.
We've, we're talking smaller dollar amounts that, that are still coming in. Reconfiguring the electrical gear, you know, maybe it's $10,000 here or there. Those types of dollars really is what I'm anticipating coming in.
And I understand that, but we sit up here in charge and responsible for taxpayer dollars. And I think it is irresponsible of any one of us to move forward on a project knowing that the cost could be reduced, albeit slight overall. It's still, at the end of the day, if it moves forward, savings to the taxpayer. My definition and part of fiscal responsibility is not simply moving things forward for the sake of doing projects at the least cost. It is about recognizing what the need is, which we have not done thoroughly. And then it's identifying the timeframe associated around those needs. I hear long-term, long-term. Who said we're looking or need to look and consider long-term? Maybe we're looking at more of what the community needs being midterm, at which point in time after we get through that period, then we look longer term. This community continues to go through certain changes and evolutions and adding population. We play to uncertainties within the economy in a lot of other places. Those are some of the hot buttons that I think of when I consider fiscal responsibility. It's not simply just knocking projects out at the least amount of cost. It's spending the time, identifying the need and then how that need fits into whatever the timeframe is. And we haven't even come close to spending the amount of time needed. When you start spending the kind of money that's in front of us tonight, these projects take years, years of conversation and developing scope. And we're going to sit up here tonight and say, oh, we give it our best effort over the course of a few months or a year and a half. I am way uncomfortable.
Mr. Pecard, Mr. Scott brings up a good point about the long-term of how long projects take with this. In a project of this magnitude that we're about to pull on, if we continue that, if what, what have we maybe not addressed, you know, besides the community input? Like is there, should we be investigating more on our, on our structure here? What is an average turnaround time for something like this? You know, he brings up valid points. If, if are we going too fast, what are we missing? What's, what's in High Tech's opinion on that?
No, I don't, my opinion, I think you guys have, you know, you've looked at new build. Consider those options. And then, you know, you've decided to go down the addition renovation side. I mean, what we've seen, you guys have done, done the due diligence. But, you know, I'm not saying that you have or haven't. just from the projects that I've been on with, uh, with municipalities. It's my opinion. I would say you've done due diligence, but.
And the, eh, the thing about projects is you can't take years to do that because all you're doing is paying more year after year. The longer you wait, things change. Studies, you, you know, we look at even the studies on the trail or Bushman. These are documents from 10-plus years ago. There's a reason you can't do due diligence for years. You have to do it within a timeframe that makes sense for the bidding process. But also, like he mentioned, we have gone through, we, we have had open houses. We have had workshops. We have had many, many discussions. So it, we can't keep waiting and waiting and waiting. Otherwise, again, nothing will get done. And so that is why we don't take years to do projects.
Well, and I'm not in any way suggesting that we sit on our hands and just nilly-willy spend the next several years trying to get something done. I'm saying let's be reasonable in ensuring that we're taking the necessary amount of time to truly engage the community, to ask the residents, what do you see being a need in City Hall? We haven't truly done that, not even anywhere close to it. And with all due respect, when it comes to, you know, I think everyone coming to their own definition of due diligence, I don't think it's up to the contractor on a project to respond to that. At the end of the day, I think it's the, it's the community, it's the residents. What do they feel? Do they feel enough due diligence has been done on the existing project in front of us? It would be an interesting question to ask people and to see what the response is.
And that could be a valid point. My, my concern is when you look at what are we exactly doing, it's office space. And that is the bulk of it, right? Maybe we disagree on that, but I look at the, the bulk of what it is, it's for office space. And I look at what we currently have and we're stepping over each other. We don't have dedicated workspaces, we don't have efficiencies. And so when I, when you ask for community input, my concern is how much of the community will put forth and poke their head in and, and agree with that? I think that's where it comes back to us as a city council as the bulk of this is what does the staff need to be, to be successful? Now, if we were talking about, again, we took the weight room off, but we're, if we're talking weight rooms, gyms, pools, 100% agree with you. That is definitely community involvement of what do we want for a community center? But when the bulk of this project is revolving around staff use, I don't think community involvement would be looking at that, in my opinion. That's just my opinion. There, they would be more interested in, in the gym and, and the, the, you know, things of those nature. The library, yes, it's, it's taken out a few walls in, in the current office space. And the multipurpose room, taken a, a few walls and repurposing that. But for the bulk of this project, it is the office space. And so for me, that's where, that's up to us to really understand and truly put that value on of what's staff's needs are to be successful in serving the community. That's my take on it.
Well, I can appreciate, Mike, how you're, how you're selling this project. Because we're, at least what I'm hearing, because we're really dealing about office space, we ought not to involve the residents and community much because, you know, we can, we can figure that out, right? And that's where we just fundamentally disagree. Anytime that we're spending millions of dollars of taxpayer money, we ought to be looking for any and all opportunity and creating more to solicit community input. The residents are the ones that should be deciding what City Hall is and how it functions. At the end of the day, in my opinion.
But, eh, and, and that's where I'd probably disagree is, is this has been a, a hot topic for the last six, seven months. Anybody had the ability to contact us, which we did. We received a lot of feedback when we were looking at a new build. We received a ton of feedback.
We did.
But since then, eh, there's been none. The, the feedback was, don't spend that much money and we have dwindled it down. The, the feedback wasn't about what we need or what we don't, it was about the spending. And now that we've got a bid in front of us of what staff needs is, and no other feedback of, I've never seen a feedback of, that's a too big of a office space. I've never seen anything like that. It was always about the capital and how much money it was gonna be. That was the only negative feedback I've ever heard besides the community center. And I'm gonna bring that up, eh, that was a negative side. So that's why we've taken out that, those portions. We've reduced the costs. We've reduced looking at the community center with what this is accomplishing. So I'll go back to, it is up to us about, about the staff. And I know we disagree on that, that's, that's just my stance and that's your stance and that's, that's why we're here. So.
My question to you is, do you feel comfortable moving forward with their bid?
I do. I feel, I feel comfortable. I would like to see a hybrid model of, of a bonding. I'd like to know what our capital improvements are in the future because I'd like to pay as much cash as possible. But I think it's also, I think Mr. Chansky has brought up in the past of, of us deciding what is that dollar amount we wanna keep on hand as cash? You know, just like your personal finances. You don't ever look at a project and go, ah, can I afford this, can I not? You look at it and go, I can, I can pay cash. Do I wanna deplete it? No, which we're not talking about doing that here because we still have additional funds on hand. But if I can get a loan for it, bonding, maybe I wanna supplement that to make sure that I keep that much cash that I, I have, I need to know that I have on. Again, that is a policy that should be addressed, but we haven't affirmed what the capital improvement plans are. So I look at it going, I'm, I'm prepared to pay all cash, but knowing what, that these capital plans are coming out in the next budget cycle here is having the ability to bond for it within the next 18 months to then put that cash back on hand, to know what we can start funding as we move along with these capital improvement plans.
And I would agree. Councilman Ball, are you comfortable moving forward with the High Tech bid?
Can I just ask a question?
Can I, can I?
I don't know that it's the mayor's role to sit up here and negotiate amongst the council.
Excuse me, I'm asking her a question and please allow her to answer. Thank you.
Well, it gets to the, I don't think that's your role.
I'm sorry, but you're not the one that's gonna tell me what my role is up here. I'm asking.
Oh, I'm not. Look at the League of Minnesota City's handbook. Weak mayor form of government. In no way outlines the mayor sitting up here negotiating with council members.
What is your opinion on moving forward?
Yeah, ignore me like you usually do.
I'm gonna make, I'm just gonna make a motion that we can discuss. I'm gonna make a motion to accept High Tech's bid in the amount of 2.95 for the City Hall expansion and renovation. And to be discussed would be how that is going to be funded um, after this motion is made, depending on how it's, if it passes or not, I should say.
I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion?
I just wanna address comments that I continue to hear tonight. And I've heard them over the last several months related to City Hall project. And to me, it's every bit of a scare tactic. Oh, everything costs more if we don't do something now. That is so far from the truth. How do we know what competition in the construction industry is gonna look like down the road? Right now, we are sitting, coming out of a period of COVID where a lot of construction companies have gone out of business. If anything, we are operating in a highly uncompetitive environment, which probably reflects the level of costs that we're likely gonna be incurring on projects like this. So actually, I think we would be a little bit well-served by taking a little bit more time and thoroughly vetting exactly the need and the timeframe in which that need fits.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I guess I'm not comfortable moving forward. I mean, I know the need for staff, I 100% agree. But what my sticking point is last, a lack of commitment for street CIP, plain and simple. Without a commitment for, you know, funding some, you know, street CIP so we can get started. That's my hang-up and I don't support it because of that.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just, I mean, I'm in support of moving forward. Again, I would like to discuss at some point adding back in some of those things that were removed that we've talked about, like the generator, the AV equipment, you know, potentially the quartz versus laminate or even the boiler and the entry system. So that doesn't have to be, I don't know, um, Andy, if that can be like an add-on later, like we can accept the bid now and then add some of that stuff on later if we have further discussions at like the August meeting or some, yes, okay, thank you.
And we can also discuss those with the discussion of the financing 'cause then we'll kind of know like what are the costs of the add-ons and then we'll also be discussing financing, so it'll be a.
Right, and we could also discuss paying some of that in cash. If there's something like a generator is a need that we think we have, then maybe we can pay cash for that instead.
I think I've made my position on this project clearly known over the last several meetings. I don't know of anyone spending their own money, spending millions of dollars of their own money who would only take months to figure out what the project looks like, uh, what the needs are. And then slightly even more concerned, hearing that the council is gonna be set to consider moving forward with this, acknowledging that we're gonna be into increased costs. So effectively, what we're communicating to the taxpayers is we're gonna approve 2.9 million dollars and oh, by the way, right, we're planning on more costs down the road. I mean, tell me how that is representing our taxpayers well at all. I, I don't, I don't understand that. That's not fiscal responsibility.
Anybody else have anything? All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
All right, so we will go ahead and. And with that, when will we be discussing that, at the August?
I'll plan on August 5th.
Okay. All right, Bushman?
So there's not gonna be any discussion now that the council just approved to spend 2.9 million on how it's gonna be financed? I mean, really? You approve moving forward a project and we're not gonna discuss financing?
We can certainly do that, I think, and, and this would be my, uh, motion here is to ask for a resolution back in August for the potential, um, bonding for that project. Again, uh, I was prepared to pay cash on hand, but I would rather see us go through the bonding process. And so I'd, I'd make a motion for that.
We add in just some of the numbers for some of those other items, just to discuss. Not saying that we're doing any of them, that's just for discussion, if we can have those itemized out, like.
I have a question on the bonding, uh, specifically the reverse referendum. Okay, so the project, we commit, it's committed, correct. So if we say we're gonna bond and as part of the reverse referendum process, that there's 70 signatures, so then you're back, you know, that it's supposed to go to a vote. Then do you fall back to financing or does the project stop?
We can pay cash, so.
And that's when.
Yeah, so I think, I mean, if residents are going to do that, I mean, I think they should really consider what that could do. That could prevent us from making a decision that would be best for us long-term. Um, now, we did, this project was never contingent on bonding, um, from the beginning. I think we were comfortable looking at, um, cash. So I think from a financial standpoint, um, we've always been comfortable, um, with the financing. So now it's just making the best decision on cash and, and bonding, so.
That is not true. That's in no way accurate to the conversations, at least that I've been a part of in this group. To sit up here and say that we came to an agreement on paying cash.
No, I said that, it was a contingent on bond and bonding.
This meeting and conversation tonight, 'cause that is wholly inaccurate.
That's not what I said. I said it, we've never had, this project was never contingent on bonding throughout the entire process that we've gone through. Um, it was not contingent on that, so, um.
At what point in time was that decided?
Well, and we, we understand that you have a different opinion and that's fine, um.
Well, it's not just me that has a different opinion.
I would like to move on, um.
So we're not gonna talk about financing?
We will talk about it on, at the August meeting.
So, Michael, if you can add on those, the one item that I mentioned, I'll, I will second your motion. 'Cause I think you had a motion on the floor.
Can I just keep it with the bonding for now?
Sure.
I'd like to just have the resolution come back in August for bonding.
Yep. I'll second that.
All right, any other discussion?
Well, so what exactly does that mean?
Yep, so just like we did with the fire truck, uh, we'll have a resolution in front of us that can say that any expenses incurred with said project, that we can ask for bonding within 18 months, I believe, Mr. Chansky clarified?
Yeah, so it's a, it's a, it's a, yeah, so the bonding resolution essentially, it's the same, eh, same thing with the fire truck, it's a reimbursement resolution saying we're, we're doing this project at this amount and we may decide to bond it in the future and pretty much have that 18 months.
I still don't get how, as a council, you can spend 2.9 million dollars and not at the same time have conversation about how you're gonna finance it? I mean, you don't go just pull a new car off the parking lot and not talk to somebody about how you're gonna buy it?
Well, that's, and that's where I go, that we have that cash on hand, that we have 5.1 million dollars.
Estimated.
Estimated, um, that the goal is not to, right? We want to bond for it, to keep that cash on hand, like I discussed, to make sure, where does a capital improvement plan, so we can make sure the seed money is there and we have everything? Again, these are all things that we're working on that are gonna be in front of us for that next budget season. So when we look at this project after, after this goes through and we go, we would like to bond for 1.2 million to make sure that we have that cash on hand after looking at everything. We've paid cash for the project, reimbursing ourselves up to that dollar amount that we've, that we are looking for, saving us the finance charges for the bond for the full amount.
So if I'm understanding correctly, then the council, as a part of moving the project forward, is saying that we're committed to paying cash for the entire amount?
Yes.
Okay, thanks for the clarification. It's more than I've gotten any other time.
It's kinda like going buy a car. If you, if you know you've got 40,000 in hand, 50,000's round up, and you go buy a car and the interest rate is cheap, do you wanna pay full cash or do you wanna keep that cash on hand? That's one of those questions that, as a personal finance, you always ask yourself of, whose money do I borrow, what rates, what, what do I use? And so if we can save ourselves almost a million dollars in, in interest fees from not having to bond the full amount, that's money worth spending and saving, in my opinion.
I was just seeking clarification and asked the question as to what are we as a council saying in terms of how this project's being financed? And now I understand that it's being entirely paid with cash. So appreciate the clarification.
I guess that's not what I unders, I wasn't understanding that's what your motion was, Michael. So maybe that's helpful, Councilman Scott. 'Cause I thought it was just to have a discussion about what portion would be bonding and what portion would be cash.
Yep, so with, with that resolution, similar to how the fire truck was, is we have 18 months to then go ask for bonding up to 2.95.
Yep.
So if we decide we only need to bond 1 million, we can choose to bond only 1 million.
So we're not just saying we're for sure just gonna pay all of this in cash?
Correct.
What we did for sure say though, within the previous motion that you did make, is that as of now, if, if we, if we don't wanna go for bonding, we are moving forward with spending 2.95 million cash.
Should we decide that? I mean, that's the, I mean, but it's, it's, it's a, it's a discussion.
I agreed to move forward with the project, but we didn't discuss how we were financing yet.
So that.
That's the bonding cash part, Michael. So I, I don't think that agreeing to the bid is agreeing to paying for it in cash.
Correct. It's just saying that we're agreeing.
That was not my motion.
But you're agreeing to pay for it?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm not arguing with that.
We're just saying that we don't know how we're gonna pay for it yet, if it's gonna be cash, bonding.
So I wanna make sure that you understand what the motion was, on the initial motion that you made. When you said it was to move forward without having bonding in the discussion, you made a motion to move forward with paying 100% cash?
No.
No, that's not what I said. I said.
I understand that's not what you did and that's why I wanna clarify because this could be recalled. If bonding is not sought after, do you not wanna move forward with the project?
Well, that's not.
Nope, I, I wanna, I, I want that answered.
My opinion, if we wanna talk about financing, is that we should be bonding for some of it, yes.
Yes.
I do not think we should pay cash for all of it, no.
But that's gonna be in the next discussion.
Sort of that combination of maybe we pay some cash for.
So I guess the question is, first of all, is there anyone, I would, I'd say for those that voted in yes to move forward, again, I'm not, I don't wanna discount any other of the council, so for the council. And I think maybe there's a clarification here. Is there anyone who's saying no to bonding? Is there anyone who's saying no to bonding?
No.
Then it's.
Yeah, then it's.
Because you're good, I guess, Councilman Rowan, what I'm hearing from you is if we decide we can't agree to bond, but if I'm hearing, well, we're all agreeing to some level of bonding, I guess I'm.
Okay.
I guess the clear, I guess the clarification is this, so if you're all, I think you're all kind, I think you're kind of talking around each other. But I don't, I guess I haven't heard of anyone saying, no, I do not want to bond, I will only vote for this project if we pay cash, unless that's your stance.
No, none of us feel that way.
From that perspective, but I do want to go back and just make it very clear with the motion that was made is, next step is I'm going to sign a contract with High Tech Construction to do this project.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And we will discuss how to pay for it and that is going to be.
You're committing to doing the project, it's just you're going to decide at a later date whether, how much you're going to bond, let's put it that way.
Correct.
Is that what we're getting at?
That was what I.
That is what I understood as well. Is that what you understood? Okay, then we all understood that and there's no, we don't need to.
You're doing the project, we're going to decide how much for bonding at a later date.
Correct.
But thank you for, Councilman Scott, just.
Well, I mean, again, I, I don't think it makes a lot of sense to most anyone if you were to ask them, you're going to move forward with doing a remodel on your home, but jeez, you're not quite sure how you're going to pay for it. Yeah, I could, I could use some level of my cash and I might take out a loan, but to me, every bit feels like the decision that's been made tonight should then follow with, how much are we going to bond for? How much are we going to commit to cash? To Steve's point, there are other needs in this community. And I think overall, in my honest opinion, the higher needs are roads.
I would, you know.
It's only going to be possible for us to continue having conversations about how much money we have and what approach do we take in addressing roads, the more clearer that we can be tonight on exactly how is this project going to be financed.
Well, and I would disagree. I am in development and it is very common to actually go through the process of a pro forma, understand what your costs are, especially when you're looking at building an apartment complex. When you understand what the cost is and you understand all of these other factors, then you decide at that point how you're going to finance it. And a lot of times you do have the cash, you can pay cash, you can raise money, but then depending on interest rates, you can look at leveraging your debt. So a lot of times you will pay cash for something and then you'll be able to get a loan out against that. So again, the cash out refis, they happen all the time, just depending on what the market is doing. So absolutely in development, it happens a lot. When you know you're going to move forward with the project because you know it's going to be profitable and you decide how to pay for that. It's not something you decide necessarily right up front. It can change, it can vary throughout a course of a year, two years, depending on the market. So absolutely, projects do move forward in that manner. And I see that being very similar to the, what we are deciding right now because we don't know yet what that looks like, but we will make that decision at the next meeting.
Well, and you're saying.
Administrator Chansky knows what direction we're moving in. He can help bring some stuff back in August to help us make that decision. So I appreciate that couple of weeks' time to have some more information about how we could split up bonding versus cash to make a better decision about how to fund this project.
Kind of sounds to me like the council was ill-prepared tonight to make a decision on this project and also coincide conversation to get very clear on how we're going to fund it. To compare city operation and spending of taxpayer dollars to that of private development, to me just goes to show how completely out of touch you are with the best utilization of taxpayer dollars.
Trying to make me look bad and say things that, no, seriously, just stop.
It's me wanting to have conversation and debate.
I'm going to let, no, I'm going to let him talk. You've had enough, you've had enough time to talk tonight. I don't appreciate it, Councilman Scott.
Well, it goes both ways.
Go ahead.
I guess the one comment I have, okay, City Hall remodel expansion went through, you know, 2,950,000. I do have a concern that the council that voted in favors already looking at adding more cost. That's just for the record.
And we don't know if we're going to do that yet. So your motion, we've had a second, right? That was a discussion?
Oh, yeah, if the motion is the same, if your motion's the same, I don't know.
Yeah, so it's a resolution, it's a motion to bring, at the August meeting, we're going to bring a, essentially, I'm bringing a reimbursement resolution to the council for consideration.
Okay, did you second that?
I did.
Okay, alright, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we will move on to Bushman Road.
Sorry, can I take one more motion? There is a couple of things that were talked about that were removed, that we, I wish to bring back if we agree in August, just to discuss if we want to look into adding those back into this project. If we don't, that's perfectly fine because things like generator we can get later. But at least we know the cost of them today, so we can look at those, so just the generator, the AV package.
The finishings?
The snow melt system and the lobby, front desk. Those are the four things.
Those are what I had on my, except for the front.
If somebody else has any they want to add, let me know, but those are the four things I'm asking, just to have them itemized so we know what they are in case we want to add them back in, in this project in the future.
The only thing I would add is again, I don't know how.
We're not having a discussion, she, she made a motion, right?
You know what, you are not going to keep me from my First Amendment rights of freedom of speech.
She made a motion. Do you second?
I am a council member and elected official as you are.
So we don't have a second on it? Do we need it though? Because didn't he agree to?
Well, if you specifically want to have it back, it'd be good to, you know.
You don't want to see those back in?
No, I've, I've, no, I don't, I don't have a need for that.
So how is it fiscally responsible to move forward with a 2.9 million dollar project?
The motion is dead, correct?
And then also reconsider items that you're going to add back in to increase the cost.
We are going to move on to Bushman Road, thank you.
And no explanation, clarification or answer.
We are going to move on to Bushman Road, thank you.
Just because you hit the gavel doesn't mean that I need to be quiet.
Please.
Would you like to second it?
Gosh.
Would I like to second what?
Her motion?
For what?
So you can discuss.
You can discuss. This is the, this is the procedure. I, I don't understand.
So now we're following procedure?
Okay, can we please move on to Bushman Road, Administrator Chansky?
Wow. When it's convenient, we follow procedure.
Okay, so we'll last discuss Bushman Road. So in 2023, September 23, we moved into Phase 2. We started Phase 2A with preliminary design, was, so prior preliminary design was Phase 1. Phase 2A was right-of-way acquisition. Phase 2B was going to be final design. We had a meeting, last discussed it on April 24th about that. Had that update from Mr. Sandy at WSB. At that time, the council said you wanted to discuss again in July and get an update on the easement acquisition process before deciding whether or not to move into final design. So Mr. Sandy is here tonight to give you an update on the project.
Alright, thank you, Mayor and Council for allowing me to be here tonight. I'm here to give an update as David outlined about Bushman Road easement acquisition. Kind of wanted to go over the process so you all are under an understanding of how this process works on our end, how many times we get in front of individual residents during the process, during the appraisal, the first meeting, and then multiple negotiation sessions after that. So the, the first step of the process is we send out, well, I should back up a little bit. Back when we did preliminary design, we set our profile and we get our construction limits, which dictate how much easement we're going to be looking for on the Bushman Road project. During that process, we found that the kind of standard right-of-way that most cities have for roads, being that 33 feet from center line, was a reasonable amount of right-of-way for this project based on the construction limits. We prepared the sketch and description documents per our scope of work. And after that, we send out what's called an early notification letter. The early notification letter kind of introduces the property owner to the project if they haven't already heard about it. It gives them contact information for our right-of-way agent. It provides them an opportunity to review the owner's guide or their, kind of know their rights handbook that we're legally obligated to give them. It allows them to fill out a form, a contact information form, what works best for you, email, phone, landline, cell phone. And those have been coming back in, so when we send those early notification letters, we send them certified mail so that we know they got them. We get the little green slips back. We did receive all those back except for one. We had one owner that lives in Wyoming that we have to do a little bit of tracking down on. The, the package was signed by a different person than the owner was, so we have to try to figure out what was going on there. So we've gotten, everyone's gotten their early notification letter packets. We've gotten certified mail tickets back for all those. Starting today and tomorrow, our right-of-way agent, his name is Benton, will be calling landowners and setting up a first meeting with property owners. And that is to review title, looking over the staking that you guys have seen out on site and having that first interaction with property owners on their property and reviewing the right-of-way boundaries that we have staked out on site. And then that just gets, you know, the relationship kind of going between our agent and that resident specifically. So then, after that process, that gets, you know, that property owner with our right-of-way agent, we have appraisers that we have hired to also reach out to the resident and the resident has the option to visit the site with the appraiser and talk over, talk over the project with the appraiser also. So those meetings are, I think, supposed to be scheduled for the week after next. So kind of two meetings right in a row with residents, one with our right-of-way agent, one with the appraiser. The appraisers say that the turnaround time is going to be pretty quick on getting all the appraisals done for the work. At that time, the appraisers submit it to another appraisal firm to review that appraiser's appraisal to standard appraising practices. So there's two reviews of that appraisal that could go out. After that time, after all the appraisals come back, we come to you, the council, with what's called a just compensation memo. And that is going to outline all of the properties we're looking to seek right-of-way for. Has the appraisal values, who the owners are. This would most likely be in a closed session, that you guys get to view that and come out of closed session and approve the just compensation. And that's when the offers get sent out via certified mail to property owners. And then from there, it's a negotiation process. Our right-of-way agents work with that property owner to come to an agreeable amount of compensation and damages for the acquiring of that easement. Once we start getting some of these coming back with agreements, we would bring them back in bunches to the city council to review and approve or if the council is not in favor of the dollar amount that was negotiated, then we would send our right-of-way agent back to talk more with that resident at that time. So it's kind of a back and forth that goes on between the agent and the city council and the resident until there is sufficient agreement by all parties involved. So and then obviously, when that final approval is done, the documents are executed and recorded at the county as final. So given that the appraisers are going to be out in the next few weeks here, I would anticipate over the next, I would say, two to three months, we're going to start seeing, you know, some people will be in agreement right-of-way, some are going to have longer time of negotiation. That might take, you know, four months, five months. We might be into that December timeline before we actually have everything acquired, which is still on schedule from opportune bidding time for a project. So from an overall schedule standpoint, we still feel pretty comfortable. The first interaction kind of gives us a good taste too on how easy a negotiation is going to be with the residents, so. So that's yet to come. Hopefully those, a lot of those meetings get done here next week. So that's kind of where we're at with the right-of-way process.
One question, and maybe I talked to Paul before the meeting because I drove Bushman Road. The Bushman property kind of caused me heartburn with the stakes. You know, halfway into the property, you know, Paul explained it, but I think it would benefit, you know, the council to understand.
Do you have Crow Wing County GIS available on the screen? So the Bushman property is one of those that's platted to the center line of the roadway. So the city's been operating under prescriptive easements for whenever Bushman Road got put in. And so actually, there's a good example of a property that has fully plotted dedicated right-of-way right next door to the west of the Bushmans, that is already 33 foot wide. So the Bushman parcel is the one that David is going to click on right here. That is the Bushman parcel. You can see that it goes to the center of the roadway right now. And the parcel just to the west is that dedicated 33-foot platted right-of-way that I was talking about. So those stakes, if you drive Bushman Road right now, the blue stakes are what we're calling permanent easement and that is 33 feet off of center line of the proposed Bushman roadway alignment, which generally follows the existing alignment except for at the curve, at the county road here and on the west end in ideal township. That's where we're at with right-of-way acquisition. I think also in front of you tonight, as we discussed last time, was our final design proposal. David and I talked about this a little bit. There is some benefit in us running final design with right-of-way acquisition at the same time. You know, we try to set our construction limit boundaries during preliminary design and making sure that we're being conservative enough and getting enough right-of-way to begin with. I would say that as we get through final design, if there are areas that we can either get rid of a temporary construction easement or if we need a little more temporary construction easement, that allows us an opportunity to make that adjustment while we're in negotiations rather than going back to that resident and saying, we don't need it or sorry, we need a little bit more. So that's the benefit, I think, in running these concurrently. It's a pretty standard practice to do that, running acquisition with final design concurrently. And from a timing standpoint, you know, our final design will probably take all the way to that December timeline to get plans and specs finalized and be ready for bidding.
Any questions?
The question I have is what's being asked of the council tonight. I just noticing in the information that staff provided, there is no request for action. And so part of the concern here being that without that having taken place, people that were looking at the agenda, looking at the information, could have logically concluded that there's no action the council's going to take tonight. So I guess the question is, what's the ask of the council?
On page, on page 13, it asks that the council should consider moving into the final design Phase 2B, which is what is the ask here for this meeting?
Which is the amount of 187, 384.
Well, to my point, I mean, if I have a hard time leaning that out of all the information that's provided, I'm quite sure that any number of other people in the resident, in the community are going to have the same potential question about exactly what do we have going on here tonight? Again, how are, how are taxpayer dollars again being used for a, you know, $3 million project? And that's been my issue from the start of this. I have no problems understanding the need to improve Bushman. I think many people in this community see the need. The issue and the problem I have is yet again, lack of time, lack of conversation, lack of looking at options. This council moved forward lock, stock and barrel without a whole lot of interaction to a full reconstruct of Bushman, which directly reflects the price tag. I'm quite confident that had we spent more time looking at options of somewhere between full reconstruct and something less, that it would have been even nice for the residents to have understood what are the different options the council's considering, but we never arrived there. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't remember us ever talking about what are the other alternatives outside of a full reconstruct.
I mean, Brad, I think the other alternatives, and I'm the first to admit, it took me a long time to get behind Bushman. You do an overlay or you make it safe. About three weeks ago, I rode with Officer Lorch, myself included. It looks like these trucks are speeding. I mean, it's a common complaint from residents. They're not. I mean, we went out there, everyone, I thought they were well over the speed limit. They weren't. But one thing I did notice, and Officer Lorch pointed it out, the way the trees are curved all the way on the north side, as part of it, he said, we need to follow a truck. I'm thinking, well, why would we want to? Um, as part of it, he said, we need to follow a truck. I'm thinking, well, why would we want to do that? Well, as soon as we got to top of the hill, there was trees in the way. He said, watch, it's going to shift left. The truck shifted left. Sure enough, there's another dump, dump truck.
Wow.
Coming right towards eleven. Um, as part of the process is that vegetation. I mean, those trees have to be removed and or trimmed. Cause they're a major safety hazard on Bushman. Um.
I can speak to that, Mr. Jensen. So uh, within the construction limits, um, which is. Within that thirty-three foot right of way, we would take the trees that are needed to be taken for construction purposes. Um, if they're not needed to be taken in that thirty-three foot right of way, we will leave them in place unless it's the council's direction. Some cities and counties clear all the way to the right of way line. Um, but I know a lot of residents and cities value their foliage um, and trees. And so um, it's really a council preference. Um, the construction limits are going to get you out a ways away from the road in general. Um, because we're doing mass grading, which is taking down steep hills. Filling in low areas and smoothing the profile out to, to your point, to improve that safety. And so that foliage and vegetation will be moved back um, a certain amount within those construction limits.
Uh, the second part, I also rode with uh, Bob from Public Works. He's the plow. He plows Bushman. Uh, he stated that he has to plow at two thirty AM to five thirty. Because with all the blind spots, cars, I mean, if people are using that road earlier, it, it's dangerous. Um, I've talked to three quarters of the police department. Asked every one of them. Everyone says it needs to be wider. So, I mean, I think Brad, it comes down to, you know, an overlay versus reconstruction. And there's a reason we're still talking about it today. And I've said this before, it's cost. I mean. It's been talked about as long as I've been coming up here since the late seventies. Um, and it's unfortunate that a community our size. Has to incur these costs for a collector road. I mean, it, it is. Um, grant wise, we're not going to get a grant because it's a road to nowhere, unfortunately. I mean, when it comes down to, you know, maybe we can, maybe we can apply for another one, but you know, getting. The grant that was applied for um, without land acquisition, I think hurt us. Um, you know, not being shovel ready hurt us. Um, and actually about, I think, two weeks ago, there was. Quite a few comments on Bushman Road on next door. I was very surprised. All saying, why is this road the way it is? Um. At the end of the day, hopefully we get some competitive bids. Um. You know, I never was in favor of trying to turn it into a county road. I think the cost at that time was. Seven point three million and that was then. I mean, that would have. The city didn't have that money and the county wouldn't commit. I mean, I understand why they did it to, you know. Turn it over to the county and it's a difficult prod, you know, project. It's going to be controversial. And at the end of the day, you know, the majority of that is cost and it is expensive. I mean, there's no ifs, ands or buts. Um, but without shaving down those hills, having sightlines and making it safe. I don't think there's anybody in White Birch sixteen that drives it that wouldn't, you know, say, we support this. Um.
Well, Steve, and I certainly am not suggesting anything to the counterparts, counterpoints that you raise. The concern I have and will continue to have. Is there are a lot of opportunities in terms of how you tackle a road like Bushman between just a simple overlay. And making it safe. I think we all would agree that the overarching goal is to make it safe. You can make that safe. You can deal with vegetation needs without going through a total and complete reconstruction of that road.
But there's no, there's not enough width.
Miniature freeway through largely a residential area that. That's all I'm going to say. I've, I think I've said my piece on that sufficiently.
Thank you for taking the time to do that, actually. I know that took a lot of time.
Quite interesting. And another point that Bob made from Public Works, he said, these trucks, you can't go over thirty-five. Cause it's, it's just not safe. Um, they, and Bill's another one that drives it. They were hauling gravel for, you know. Uh, reconstructing or working on some roads for White Birch sixteen. And they said at the end of the day, when they have to drive that road hauling gravel for projects, they are mentally and physically spent. I mean, it's dangerous. You know, can you do it partially? I don't know how you can. Um.
I think the Bolton and Mink report and study really looked at the alternatives and I think that's. That's where you guys made the decision to move forward with the design that you did is the Bolton and Mink report. On top of the multiple studies that have been done for twenty years on Bushman Road and relooked at and, and rehashed. And Bolton and Mink, I think, looked at that road four or five times.
You've done right.
Well, that, that was something that we looked at was the county highway. And a lot of public input was, no, we don't want that. We don't need that. And so that's where the council withdrew from that. That and, and our partners. The west, nor, east, west didn't want to continue with it as well. So. We definitely pulled them, pulled away from that. Lack of county commitment. It just, it wasn't panning out for that. Um, and like I say, community input as well.
Well, and I think Rancho too. I mean, that just got abandoned and due to economy, but I mean, that road is in rough shape.
Mm-hmm. That is too.
You know, unfortunately, Akerson and, you know, going into Pequot's going to stay the same, but I mean, it's incredibly dangerous. Um. And you know, it's, at the end of the day, eh, you know, we're, we're. Building, reconstructing this collector road, but it does, you know, the high amount of, you know, dump trucks. The side dumps because of the Crowing County roundabout there in three and four. It was incredible how many trucks. That day when I met Officer Larch. Um, I saw him coming down eleven and, you know, heading down towards Bushman. Um, you know, when they have projects, it's busy. It's incredibly busy and it's all day. So.
And we'll never know how we can make that road safe. And still not spend three million dollars because we didn't specifically have any conversations related to that or along those lines. Zero. Studies are fine, you know, evaluations are great. Um, which you get from engineers are important. But there are a lot of, there's a lot of room between, again, just simply going through and doing nothing safety wise. And a complete and utter tear up and reconstruct of that road. Um. I, unfortunately, I, I kind of view that and its current trajectory is. You know, being the black eye in, in that area, it's going to look completely out of place.
I'm going to make a motion to move into the final design phase two B for the total of. One eighty-seven, three eighty-four. For Bushman.
I'll second.
Right. Any other discussion?
The point, uh, clearly I'm going to be voting no on this, but it's not to do with anything related to the need. I see the need. I understand the safety concerns. I don't see how this road should cost the taxpayers three million dollars.
I guess, you know, to that point too, part of my struggle with Bushman. Crowing County has a local option sales tax. They're allowed to use that for roads. Cities are not. So we unfortunately don't have that as an option. There are grants. Unfortunately, we didn't get the grant.
When we, we did talk about we could apply for it.
Now we can apply again.
It depends.
If it's available.
Yeah, I mean, we can apply. Yeah, I mean, if there is.
Do anything in the last session to find that program. So sometimes MNDOT has additional money set aside for that program that.
Yeah, I mean, if we, if there is something I absolutely apply for, we have nothing to lose here.
Be in a better position too.
But there's just, you know, not means, um, other than the cities that have these roads that.
Besides assessments.
Huh?
Besides special assessments. That's, that's your only real.
But for a collector road like that, you can't special assess. So it, it, it is frustrating. I don't disagree, Brandon, but.
Yeah, and I agree. It's unfortunately, it was so expensive to turn it over to the county because that was kind of the direction I'd went. Because I didn't want to have to try to put it into a CIP and continue to pay for it every year thereafter, once it's fixed. So that's, that's.
Well, and you being White Birch sixteen, you know, that was another comment when they were fixing roads there. Making that left turn on a Bushman. I mean, it's dangerous because there's a blind spot. Um. You know, it's a tough project. Um, at the end of the day, that's why it was talked about for twenty years.
Well, I, and you know, just to reiterate, our estimate right now is a thirty percent. Um, with a lot of contingency because we're at a thirty percent level. Um, if we bid in a competitive environment, December, January. Um, the, the real likelihood is that those costs are, are going to come down. Um, just given the, the high level estimate we're at, we like to be on the safe side.
Right. Which is, I'd rather have you guys on the safe side, the conservative side anyway. So, all right. Any other discussion?
In not having access to the additional revenue streams that Steve mentioned, um, again, on my mind, should every bit equal. More time, more conversation, how do we tighten the purse strings while still making that road safe and functional?
All right. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we're about to move on to the CIP.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Member of the council. So this is a project, I think, I've been mentioning for a while, something that's been on the. Uh, goal list to get done is to get, uh, I'm calling this is the equi- I'll call this the equipment CIP for the city. Uh, so right now, as it stands, well, essentially what we do, we go by year by year basis. What do we need this year? Um, and we budget it. Um. Defect of that is some years you might have is we're going to see as I go through this. You know, a small amount you need and then next year's a big amount. Um, and then you have to figure out. Again, are we, how are we funding it? Are we using cash on hand or using levy dollars? And then if you're using levy, obviously your levy starts to bounce around. Because one year you might have only had, you know, sixty thousand dollars in capital you had to do. The next year you had four hundred thousand. And you have that bounce around. So what we've produced, again, this is our, it's still a working draft. Um, it's something that we will be finalizing over the weeks to come as we go through um, the budget process. I think we were at a very good, comfortable. Um, I think in my memo I said seventy-five percent and this might actually be closer to eighty or ninety percent. I think we got pretty much all the big items in here. Um, what we'll be doing over the weeks to come is, is really just honing it down. But what I want to do tonight is just kind of get it in front of you, any immediate questions you have, and we'll discuss even more detail. As we get and discuss preliminary uh, budget as well. So what this document does, um, it's actually borrowed. Mr. Sandy made a comment earlier, oh, I think I've seen that spreadsheet before, uh, part of the meeting. Um, actually borrowed this from the city of Brainerd. Um, this is a CIP that they get a lot of praise for. Um, and so it took that, simplified it down to what we will have in breezy point. Um, but I think it, it sums it up very well. So I'm going to get to the summary page really quick. Um. I'll get to that in just a minute. I just want to go through, essentially we've broken it down into essentially what, six buckets. Um, in each sheet you have, I have a tab up here. Um, you have city hall, we're calling general. So that's just kind of like the building down here expenditures. You've seen, we have things like council chambers, community room, library, multipurpose room, city hall sign. Um, those are future expenditures um, that we anticipate in the future, big capital items. So that's also what I want to talk about here. We're talking about capital items. We're thinking things that are on a replacement rotation. Things that are not, you know, fifty bucks, a hundred bucks, those bigger multi-thousand dollar items. So then what we do is look at, okay, based off of its current condition, when do we believe it's going to be replaced? What's the life cycle of that piece of equipment and how much do we think it's going to be replaced it? And then we place it on that year. Um, so we have city uh, administration, you go to admin side. Um, admin side is the one area where you might say things that aren't, what you might say technically. Equipment, but there are things again that are multi, many thousands of dollars and are on a rotation. So for example, in here, comprehensive plan, zoning code, cod, city codification, wage studies, those are things. All this do the zoning code comp plan and the co- zone, uh, city code codification. Ideally, what you want to do, again, to make those plans living is to be looking at them, I think the best. Best practice is say about every five years, spend some time to soft look at something, make sure it's still up to date. If we've gone through something like a pandemic, it's getting addressed. How has the community changed? Has something happened that has changed the community that we need to change our comprehensive plan? Once the comprehensive plan's done, you look at, okay, does then the zoning code, are there's any part of the zoning code that needs to be updated? To match the comprehensive plan? Is there something in the market that has changed that we should look at our zoning code? And then once that's done, it's okay, we should look at the city code and recodify the code. So you kind of see here. That's why it's, you know, one year's comp plan, next year's zoning code, next year's co- code codification. And doing that essentially like every five-ish years. By doing that, what you also avoid is having to do what we're doing, what we have just started that process of an eighteen month overhaul. You avoid having to do big overhauls because you're regularly looking at your code. Um, so that's while not an equipment piece, it's a multi-thousand dollar thing that we should be doing regularly. Um, software, things like that, um, furniture, those are things we look at. What are, what are things we need to do regularly, multi-thousand dollars, what year to do it, how much? Uh, same thing with IT, looking at our equipment. Um, when it comes to an IT, what you'll find out here, we're focusing mainly here on hardware. Software, most of our software, um, as we talked about in budget, we talked about it previously like last year. There are things that are on like, say a subscription type of thing. We're not going to include the subscription here. We include that as part, just part of our general operating budget. This is kind of the. The hard, the hardware, the thing that's a, you know, buying a laptop. Not the three, the Microsoft three sixty-five subscription, but the actual laptop itself, things like that. Uh, police, that's we get into vehicles, some of their equipment, all in here. Um, you'll see there's some things in here, again, um. Firearms, obviously we just updated those or, or up, or got new ones. So again, those are going to be further out. You don't see tasers in here because as we discussed last year, it's part of the budget when we budgeted for new tasers this year. The mark things are changing and whoever thought tasers would be a subscription service, but they are now. Um, so that's why you don't have things like that in there. Um, parks, uh, we currently, there aren't really any specific. Specific items right now. Um, what we've just done for parks, and again, this can be broken out, is kind of a bucket. Um, that's what we did this past year. You kind of gave them a bucket. So for now, we just kind of put a bucket of money. That can be obviously a discussion if you want to break it out into specifics, items of parks. Um, you know, playgrounds be specific, or if you want to leave it more vague, again, these are things that we can discuss as we hone this. Um, I do want to say this document, the idea of CIPs is they are truly living documents. They do change from time to time. Um, I use an example, someone recently, um, I think, you know, Crowing County's CIP, which is very, very similar of it, obviously on a bigger scale. I think they've done, I think I've seen on their agendas, three or four CIP amendments just this year. So things do change. Sometimes it's because something came up, we want to shift a vehicle. Up a year because we need a replacement, so we'll shift something back, things like that. Public Works, again, you got, you know, all of their equipment. I'll use an exa- I'll use an example of something that already shifted. I know when Joe was um, doing his. Made a comment on um, the skid steer is, was scheduled to be replaced sooner. Um, I think in like this year or is it next year? I think either twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six. And the tool cat was scheduled to be replaced in twenty twenty-seven or something like that. And, but based off of, you might have seen in the um, brief. We've been having to do a lot of maintenance on the tool cat. So Joe's opinion was skid steers in decent shape. Let's move the skid steer two years and move the, move the tool cat up. And just replace that and stop putting money into constantly maintaining it. You know, you're, it's when you just money to fix, to fix it, which else means we don't have it, all of that jazz. So. That's where things can be moved around throughout the life of this. Um, so you have all of these green tabs down here on mine. Um, they're different pages for yours. Those are kind of essentially the different departments. When you move it into the summary page, which is the first page you have, this is where it all comes together. Okay? So the idea of the CIP here is this. So if you look on this expenditure line right here. This is kind of the individual year. Right now, what we're doing is going, okay, we need four seventy-six in twenty-five. And then in twenty twenty-six, we budget three seventy, and then twenty twenty-seven, we budget three twenty-two. And it goes like this, expenditures do this, which also means that affects your levy in the same manner. The benefit of a CIP like this is this top number here. Is right now, as it sits right now, I have a number of two hundred ninety-two thousand. You can budget essentially two ninety-two a year. And it doesn't have to change. I'm not saying it will never change. We'll talk about where times it might go up or even opportunities to maybe even lower it. Um, but it's kind of stays level. So you're doing, you know, two ninety-two in the budget every single year. And then we're looking at general operating. General operating tends to move a lot less. So then you have this opportunity of when you go year to year, you know, little smaller levy adjustments. And not the bigger adjustments. you know, little smaller levy adjustments and not the bigger adjustments that happen because of capital. So that's the idea there. So you're looking at, again, top line versus the expenditure line. This cash balance line, how did we get to nine? How did David, how did you get to nine, 292 right now? That comes to this cash balance line. Essentially what you do, but by also doing this in this manner, you can be a cash pay. So everything is pay as you go. We don't have to be bonding for dump trucks or anything like that. We can just cash pay everything. Right now, I have it in this format, having a beginning cash on hand of a million dollars. I just put a million dollars in there, right? We seed it with a million. You'll see, you have surveying surplus minus the expenditures, plus that, you know, you, million dollars, yeah, million dollars, add 292, minus 476, end of the year with 815, 506. Okay, well, that becomes your new cash balance for the next year, and you go along down the line. What you need to do is make sure this line stays positive. As you can see, you know, we started a million, after 2025 is 815. It goes down, 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 up a little, down a little, down, down, down. You know, one year might go down to 28, and then it goes back up to 110, 207, down to 22. We try to keep it even, right? We want to make sure no year is at a deficit. If it's, if a year isn't a deficit, that means we don't have money to do those projects. Okay? So what I do is I look at, okay, what is roughly the lowest number we can get up here and keep everything even? Some things we also do, I've done a little bit, is shift things around. So we go, okay, this this piece of equipment has an eight-year lifespan, but we've got a lot of projects going in 2035. Can we kick a project a year? You know, you look at, you know, can we shift a project one year again to help that get down? Keep that number down. So we've done that a little bit already of going, well, this should be an eight-year project, but it can be a nine-year project to help keep this number down. So that's how this works. The document you'll see, it says 20 years. I do realize 2025 to 2045 is actually 21 years? But I liked having it end in 2045, so I just kept it for now. And then you just keep, you can just keep going, in kind of in perpetuity. Generally, when you're looking at this, you're really looking at your first five years are your main, what you're looking at. Because trying to look five years in the, more than five years, and we're looking 21 years into the future, things can change. What generally you can do is go the five years, and then maybe in 2030, we take a look at it and go, well, where are we at? Right now, we estimated that after, you know, beginning in 2030, we'll have a cash balance of 459,051. You'll see in this plan, I don't have sale of assets. You see it's zero. I don't like to put that in there just because you never know. And sometimes we don't sell an asset. For example, when we've taken an old squad from PD, instead of selling it, transferred it to Public Works for them to use. So sometimes a replacement is more of a transfer of a project. We don't, a piece of equipment, we don't necessarily sell it. And sometimes we don't know what exactly we're going to get. So what you could end up doing, and also, we don't put any grants in here. We're always going to pursue grants when we have the opportunity, but you don't want to, you know, assume a grant. So say, you know, this year, 2025, we're at right now, 476, 494. You know, we get, say, 20, you know, between sale of assets and grants, I'm just going to put in there just 50,000. Well, now, the cash balance is 50,000 more. That affects the whole, the whole plan down the line. Where if you end up doing that, and also, we also get an experience is maybe costs are less than anticipated, sometimes costs are more. Okay, if we were to say, I'm just going to put some numbers in here, right? Okay, and we'll say nothing for 2029. So essentially, we've gained 90,000 more than anticipated. We might be able to, in 2029, we might be able to actually, sort of start in 202030, lower it. We might be able to go, we actually have a greater cash balance than we originally planned after five years. Maybe we can consider lowering, lowering the capital levy a little bit, you know? Or if it goes the other way around, where costs have been higher than anticipated, we haven't been able to get other forms of revenue, maybe it's got to go up a little bit. So we're looking 20 years in advance, but we're kind of going five, I would recommend five years at a time. So that's how that works. So it's not necessarily 292 in perpetuity. But again, it's as we go, we can, we can make minor adjustments instead of large adjustments. Any questions on the formatting of this plan right now?
I think this looks really good so far.
Yeah, you did a really good job.
It reminds me of the one for the fire district, so.
Yes.
I'm familiar with it a little bit already, the structure of it, but I like it. So thank you for all the work you guys have done.
Yeah, good job, you guys.
So again, this isn't in its final form. We're going to be, so we're going to be working on it throughout the budget process. I think the goal here is that to implement it as part of the 2025 budget. So right now, I think it's mostly done. It's just going to be figuring out numbers. One of the things I do want to, I'm going to put in your ear now, if you want to have a little bit of discussion about it, you can. Otherwise, just for thinking about, for discussions in coming weeks, is one of the things that this has is this is all anticipating 2020. These are essentially using 2024 numbers. Cities approach that differently. Some cities, they say, well, put it in current, current year numbers for the entire plan. And again, we'll look at it as we go and make adjustments as we need to. If, you know, costs end up coming in higher, then we'll just adjust it. Other cities put in an inflation factor. They go, well, instead of having to constantly be looking and adjusting the levy, if necessarily, why don't we just put in a certain percentage factor into all the costs every single year? And then just put that, implement that into the levy? That's an approach you can take too. So just something to think about of what kind of approach you might prefer, whether just to keep things in 2024 dollars and adjust as needed, or if you want to put in there some kind of inflation factor. What inflation factor you put in there is really up to you. Is it 1%, 2%, 3%, 5%? You know, it's up to see, what are you comfortable with? Good, it does, would have obviously impacts on to what the, what the levy then has to be. The higher, the higher inflation factor you put into it, obviously, the higher the levy is going to have to be to support it. So just something to think about. I know the City of Brainerd, again, this is kind of their format, they don't put an inflation factor in. And they just make adjustments as they need. Other communities, they do, they put down inflation factor.
Out of curiosity, since you worked for Brainerd for several years, how often are they adjusting the inflation factor? I mean, is it every couple of years?
Yeah, so they don't do an inflation factor, but so.
But I mean, when do they, I mean, how often have they had to?
Change the levy?
Change the levy.
Essentially, what they do is as part of the budget every year, they go, they bring the capital plan up, and they say, obviously, you know, this is what's planned for this year. And what they do is they, again, they'll put in there after the year's done, any sale of assets, any additional, what was the actual costs? And then if they start, if a year starts to go into a deficit, it's kind of, I think how they pretty much do it is they wait, if anything down here goes into a deficit, then we've got to have a discussion. So they kind of go place on that. As long as we're good, we leave it there. If a year goes, if any year goes into a deficit, then they have a discussion of, how do we address the deficit? Are we moving equipment? Or are we increasing the levy? So that's how they kind of. Yeah, so if any, if any specific year, if at the end of a year, essentially, there's a negative balance, well, we can't have a negative balance. Then they go, okay, so we've either got to push a project later into the plan, remove, either push any piece of equipment, remove a piece of equipment, or increase the levy.
We didn't, we didn't put inflation into the fire district plan, did we?
No.
Okay, I didn't think so.
It was a discussion, but I think we tried to decide not to do that, yeah. So that's just something to also kind of be thinking about as you digest this. Obviously, we kind of talked about already funding, how would the funding work for something like this? Again, with my example here, I just used a million dollars to start with. That would lead to a recommend, what I'm calling the recommended capital levy of 292. You can always go higher if you'd wanted, but 292 is kind of the, right now, the lowest you can go comfortably and have every, every year in its current format be funded sufficiently. When you look at the current budget, so I went into the current budget. Obviously, we have that 572 we always talk about here. In 2024, there was an additional 120 that we were dedicating towards capital, especially, specifically, equipment. There was 10,000 for, that we've been transferring from parks every year, 50 from Public Works, and then we had 60 this year in, in capital in the general fund for PD, and that was the annual squad. Well, all of those things are now reflected in this plan. So you also have that 120. So what I would say is you take the 192, first thing you want to do is subtract the 120 that's already there. Okay, now you're at, okay, we need to, we need to make up 100, another 172,000. If you took that out of that existing 572, you still have 400,000 that you can use for a City Hall bond, a Bushman bond, already built into the levy. So pretty much what I'm showing you here is if you were to say, even if you were to seat it at just a million dollars, you wouldn't necessarily need to increase the levy to fund this plan and this current project. Again, I want to say to, for this, if you start adding things on top of that, again, money is finite. So if you add City Hall on top of that, Bushman on top of that, depending on how you fund everything. But I just wanted to show that's a way of how you would fund that is, you know, without having to add 170. You don't necessarily need to add 172,000 in the budget to fund, this is what I'm getting at.
Is, is, I would, you would build, I suppose eventually it probably wouldn't change this much because that would be like years out, but you would build like a renovated City Hall into the CIP.
Yeah, so right now, this CIP does not have any.
It just has, does it have, oh, it doesn't.
So this, this current, this plan does not currently have facilities in it.
Okay.
One of the big reasons was discussion was, we're still kind of up in the air of what we were doing with City Hall. So we had no facilities is not built into this at this time.
So not the police, police?
No.
Building or the maintenance building or?
Yeah, we've been, we have a facility maintenance budget in the operating budget for our facilities right now. Like we upped the public safety building a couple of years ago to have, to be able to be more proactive.
Okay.
But we don't currently have it in this plan. We just started, right now, we're, we're just focusing on equipment.
All right.
And you can always, we can always add it. Again, this is a living document, you can add things. You know, there might be things that we do down the road, realize, hey, we need to add something. Or maybe there's even opportunity going, hey, we don't need that thing, we can remove it from the plan. Again, you would amend it. How I see this happening is when the council, at the end of, eventually, hopefully approves this, when we get to a final version of this plan, if we ever needed to make an amendment, what we would do is we would come before the council, say, we would like to request to make amendment to the capital plan, show you, tell you what that, what that amendment is, why we need the amendment, what the cost of that item is, and how we're going to implement it into the plan, whether it's, well, we're going to swap it out for a different, different item. Maybe it's something that's already in the plan. Again, we had a piece of equipment that was scheduled two years down the road. We want to move that up, and we're going to shove another one back. There would be kind of an amendment process where we come before you, say, this is the amendment we want to make, and then the council gets to ultimately make the decision of whether or not to, to make that amendment to the plan.
David, how does any additional tax levy need to support this plan work on the equipment side when some of that equipment is arguably being used for the city sewer operations? Is that tax levy going to support the entire cost of that? Or are there some plan to come on to the sewer fund?
So right now, we just kind of put everything in here to that point. Again, as we're, as we're finalizing and working through the details, we can have, we'll definitely break out equipment and say that's a sewer piece of equipment, and we can take that out of here. Right now, this would be kind of full general fund, I guess you would argue. But as we, right now, we were like, let's get everything in here, what would the number be? And then as we, we can definitely go through specifically the Public Works equipment and go, you know, that's a, that's a sewer equipment, let's remove that, and that's, we can create a separate capital plan for enterprise fund equipment.
And to Councilmember Ball's point, I would absolutely support the inclusion of facilities in here. I think most people would be surprised, the number of actual facilities or structures, right, that are part of city operations. I could almost make, and maybe others could as well, an argument that there is higher priority needs on the public work side as far as facilities go than anywhere else in the, in the city. So I would really support inclusion of those capital facilities needs.
I would agree, and if we're going to do it, let's have everything in there.
Yep, I agree.
I agree too. Makes sense.
Okay, excellent. So again, that's, I just want to get this in front of you, get some of that initial feedback, and we'll continue to discuss it as we work through the budget process here, starting just a couple of weeks here.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I've got for this evening.
All right, well, the last thing I wanted to bring up, so last year, we approved $500 for Night to Unite. Happy Dancing Turtle was able to attend last year for the butterfly release, and they had a table, I don't, did you go? You went last year, didn't you? Did anyone go?
I was, I was parking cars.
Oh, yeah, so.
This time too.
It was actually the biggest attendance, I believe, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and one of the things was that we advertised was Happy Dancing Turtle was, was going to be there, but they can't make it this year. And I don't want to not have anything for the kids to do. So I just wanted to come and ask you guys maybe to approve some funds just to get some of the coloring stuff and other things that the kids were doing at the table. I'm happy to get that stuff, set it up, and then obviously take it down. And actually, like, while we're talking about it, you know, one of the things about Night to Unite, we didn't ask for funds yet, and we can't do like the guy who was singing with the guitar last year. So there's a couple of things even from Night to Unite that we do need a little bit of funds for if we were going to move forward. So I guess, what are you guys' thoughts on allocating again?
So what is the ask? I hear you say that there is money committed already, anticipating certain activities, and now that those activities aren't occurring, are the monies still up there?
No, I mean, I think maybe like $100 or something to the butterfly release. If we're not able to do that, then I will just donate it myself, purchase it and donate it myself with the Night to Unite.
I think $100 is perfectly fine. I mean, to put towards butterfly release, I don't have an issue with that personally, but.
I don't have an issue with the Night to Unite. My only question is, I mean, that's kind of.
We could probably talk about it in August, right?
Yeah, I mean, Chief Sandell will have input on what it is, you know, he needs. I mean, that's the police department's baby.
Well, we supplied the music last year. Sandy did get that, but I mean, we don't have to, I'm just, it's just.
And that one's not on the agenda, so I would prefer to just wait if we can put it on the August agenda, if nobody minds.
Yeah, no problem, I just was.
Allocating funds for Night to Unite in the August meeting.
I will say that Night to Unite is the day after the council meeting.
Is it?
And that's why too, I would have brought this.
That's not helpful, I was thinking it was later in the month.
He did not pay for the music last year.
Yeah, well, Sandy paid it out of pocket, and it was like $150, yeah.
I didn't realize that.
And the face painter, I think, and then I had got some things for the kids too last year that we paid for, but yes, Andy did pay stuff out of her pocket.
Can we talk about it now?
Huh?
The Night to Unite, like funds for?
I would say, because it's not on the agenda, and this is a special meeting.
Yeah, that's kind of what I thought.
I would.
That's kind of what I was told earlier, wasn't it?
I would keep to the butterfly release.
That's fine, that's fine. I'm just letting you guys know.
And considering the amount of money the council spent tonight, I don't see how $100 should be an issue.
I would hope not, but.
Well, then I would question, why is it even in front of the council?
Because then I would be paying it out of pocket, so I'm not really sure.
I guess, as long as we're talking, the butterfly release, you know, one other comment I have is the Public Works has been very busy this week. They've basically spent the entire week out there. The cemetery looks incredible. They, they do an excellent job, you know, year round, but need to acknowledge, you know, the job that they do on a continual basis.
Yes, they do.
Agreed.
So do I have a motion then to approve $100 for supplies?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All those favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.